Welcome, everyone. We'd like to call to order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for May the 19th, 2025. We will ask Commissioner Kent Herman to give our invocation and Commissioner Ronnie Reese to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would stand.
If you would bow with me, please. Dear heavenly Father, just thank you for today. Lord, just thank you for letting us come back here today and be with us through this meeting, lead and guide and direct us, be with everyone that's here tonight, and get them back home safe. Lord, just be with all the people where the tornadoes have hit across the United States and help comfort those people, especially the ones that's lost loved ones, be with all of our first responders, our deputies, highway patrols, and all over the country, and firefighters. And, Lord, most of all, just lead and guide and direct us in this meeting, do everything and be pleasing in your sight, in your name I pray. Amen.
Looked as like attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
This time, do we have any commissioners with any reports to give?
Well, Mr. Chairman went over to Bethlehem to the park Saturday morning, and, of course, it was raining pretty heavy there for a little while, but about 9:30, we finally did the grand opening for the First Annual Spring Fest at Bethlehem Park. Park looks really, really good, and I didn't get to stay long because I had another appointment I had to be at, but when I was there, there was people starting to come in. They had to cancel the pickleball tournament because of the rain, but I think it went off without a hitch and things went really well.
Mr. Chairman.
I went to the fire chiefs' meeting Thursday night, had a good meeting. I hope the details of the budget, what little I could share with them, because we hadn't voted on it, was appreciated, and I appreciate them letting me sit in on their meeting.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to adoption of agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and second. Any discussion on adoption of agenda? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we will be going into a public hearing for fiscal year 2025-2026 Alexander County Proposed Budget and Budget Message. Do I have a motion to enter a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We are, we will consider ourselves seated in our public hearing. Jennifer Herman, Finance Director.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. I'm pleased to submit the Alexander County Proposed Budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. This is referred to as fiscal year 2526 throughout the document you have in front of you. So, the following budget message highlights the goals and objectives expressed by the Board of Commissioners during the budget preparation process. Budget requests and revenue estimates were analyzed during an initial work session on April 21st with further discussion at the May 12th budget work session. This budget message contains the results of the board's careful consideration of budget requests and funding sources. The proposed general fund budget for fiscal year 2526 totals $60,327,132, reflecting a 6.5% increase, or about $3.7 million, over the fiscal year 2425 adopted budget. This increase is driven primarily by inflationary cost pressures, critical service needs, and targeted investments in county infrastructure and personnel. When comparing the initial general fund budget request to estimated revenues, the budget showed a projected shortfall of 8.2 million. Through extensive review, collaboration, and prioritization, the proposed shortfall has been reduced to approximately 5 million. With the growth in property valuation hovering around 1% and sales tax revenues remaining the same or less than last year, the county plans to appropriate $5,333,000 of fund balance as a revenue source in order to balance the county budget. The property tax rate for fiscal year 2526 is proposed to remain at 65 cents per $100 valuation. I would like to start with talking about employee compensation and personnel changes. The proposed budget includes a 2.5% cost of living adjustment for all county employees, along with the continuation of the employee holiday bonus. In response to urgent staffing challenges in public safety, the budget also proposes an additional pay increase for most employees in the sheriff's office, detention, 911 communications, and EMS. These steps are critical to improve recruitment and retention, particularly in departments where turnover is high and regional salary competition is strong. A number of new positions, along with existing position reclassifications, were requested by various departments for the upcoming budget year. The following new positions are included in the proposed budget. Eight paramedics to form an additional EMS crew, a part-time position in emergency management, a social worker in adult protective services for DSS, and a part-time position for the senior center. Moving on to capital outlay requests. County departments requested $3,581,590 in capital outlay expenditures for fiscal year 2526, but not all requests could be funded. While reviewing requests, an emphasis was placed on items critical to safety, infrastructure maintenance, and continuity of county operations. The capital outlay items that are included in the 2526 proposed budget total over 2.2 million. The following list, which is not all-inclusive, highlights the major capital expenditures recommended across all county functions. In EMS, an ambulance with a power-load stretcher at $324,000. In the sheriff's office, four vehicles with equipment at $339,000. In maintenance, we have buildings and grounds improvements at $358,000. In 911 communications, replacement of equipment at $142,325. Three vehicles in DSS at a total of $120,000. At the landfill, a rubber tire loader at $250,000. And in the water and sewer fund, replace two water lines for a total of $680,000. The grand total of those items, which is not all-inclusive, is $2,213,325. Moving on to fee adjustments. In the general fund, EMS has proposed the following fee changes: increased billing fees by $50 across the board, implement a $50 public assist fee, and increased mileage fee from $11 to $13 per mile. The solid waste fund has plans for fee changes as well. Convenience site fees are proposed at $2 per 30-gallon bag, which is the first increase since 2015. Landfill fees are proposed to increase $5 per ton to bring construction and demolition debris to $60 per ton, and household, commercial, and industrial waste to $70 per ton. Landfill fees were last increased in fiscal year 2021-2022. These changes are intended to stabilize the solid waste enterprise fund while focusing costs on users as opposed to the general fund. For fire protection, I would like to share that most fire departments requested additional general fund appropriations or fire tax rate increases to support equipment and staffing. Based on the consensus that fire protection services should be funded by fire district property tax revenues, the fiscal year 2526 proposed budget maintains current-year funding levels by adjusting the fire tax rates as necessary in each district. This action is expected to save approximately $328,000 in the general fund without reducing the amount of funding to the fire departments. The list below contains the fire district property tax rates for fiscal year 2425 and the proposed rates for 2526. In Bethlehem, there would be no change. The rate is .430 cents. Wittenburg would go from .058 to .0581. Hidney would go from .050 to .0670. East Alexander/Stony Point would go from .07 to .0774. Ellendale would go from .06 to .078. Sugarloaf from .075 to .083. Central Alexander from .05 to .0510. And Vash-Tai from .08 to .1070. I would like to add, this is not in here, I spoke with our tax administrator this afternoon, and we might, would have some slight changes to those due to some rounding effects in the tax office software. It would basically drop off that last digit, but those would be very minor changes that he and I will work out going forward. Moving on to Alexander County schools. The initial budget request from Alexander County Schools totaled $7,647,247, which included an increase of $154,206, or 2.1% over the fiscal year 2425 funding, in order to address shortfalls in the school nurse fund initiative, NC pre-K program, and school resource officer program. A revised budget request from the school system contained an additional request for $528,061 to replace the loss of low-well supplemental funds from the state. The total funding request from the school system stands at $8,175,308, which is an increase of $682,268, or 9.1% over fiscal year 2425 funding. The county's proposed budget for fiscal year 2526 includes an appropriation of $8,780,40, which is an increase of $585,000, or 7.8% over the funding for fiscal year 2425. Regarding utilities rate changes, the City of Hickory is proposing a 5% increase in its water volume rate and a 5% increase in the sewer volume rate for bulk sewer customers effective July 1st, 2025. This is subject to approval by the Hickory City Council as a component of the city's 2526 budget. In a letter to Alexander County from City of Hickory Public Utilities, the rate increases were attributed to inflation in chemical, electricity, personnel, equipment, and material costs. County projects. A number of major projects will start or continue during the 2526 budget year. These include water and sewer infrastructure projects, community development initiatives, and public park and county facility improvements. Funding sources for the projects include state and federal grants, as well as other special funds earmarked for such expenditures. These projects are not included in the general fund budget but are accounted for in multi-year project budgets which span the life of the project rather than just a single fiscal year. Continuing projects include the ARPA Waterline Extension Project, the Bowman Court Sewer Pump Station Project, Bethlehem Water Tank Project, Alexander Industrial Park Shell Building Site Sewer Extension Project, Three Forks Church Road Waterline Extension Project, Sterling Road Neighborhood Revitalization Project, 16 West Main Avenue Downtown Revitalization Project, and the EMS Station 1 renovation project, which that's the EMS station in Taylorsville. New projects include planning and design work for improvements to East Park and renovations to EMS Station 2 in Bethlehem. In addition, the fiscal year 2526 general fund budget will continue to set funds aside for future capital projects. As recommended by interim county manager Deborah Bechtel, the board's commitment of fund balance will accumulate over time to reduce the county's reliance on debt financing. This action will also position the county to leverage future capital grants that require a local match. Debt service. This budget includes a general fund appropriation of $659,000 for principal and interest payments on the debt for the law enforcement and detention center. The 2011 installment financing agreement was refinanced in 2020, and I'm happy to report the final debt service payment will take place in January 2026. The fiscal year 2526 budget also includes a debt service appropriation of $945,000 in the county water and sewer fund to pay the principal and interest on four separate debt issues for water and sewer projects. The individual loans, which are being repaid from water and sewer revenues, will mature in 2028, 2035, 2040, and 2041. In closing, I would like to express my appreciation to our department heads and staff for their diligence and commitment throughout the budget development process. I want to thank the finance department's staff for their hard work, attention to detail, and dedication behind the scenes. As always, our clerk to the board has provided invaluable assistance to keep us informed and up to date during this busy time. A special thank you goes to our interim county manager for her steady leadership, insight, and support during this transition period. I also thank the finance committee of the board for their careful review and valuable guidance, as well as the entire Board of Commissioners for their leadership, vision, and steadfast commitment to serving the people of Alexander County. Together, we have developed a proposed budget that reflects the board's priorities of being fiscally conservative while ensuring the continued operation of all county functions and service delivery to all citizens. We look forward to adopting the fiscal year 2526 budget in June. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to add, because Jennifer would never say it of herself, I have never been so impressed with the dedication and hard work of a finance director, and I have worked with quite a lot over my career, who are all excellent, but she's amazing, and you know that, but everybody deserves her most of all to know how amazing and dedicated she is to this county. And all the other people are great that she mentioned, but Ben Fockenberry particularly also really helped the team get this budget to where it's out, and they deserve recognition.
Well, we appreciate everything the two of them have done, and all the staff members, but for years, Jennifer, you have done an outstanding job, and you're to be commended on the job you've done as our finance director.
Thank you.
I don't always agree with you, because I want it to go the way I want it to go, okay? But that's just me saying, you know, I'm not. But I do appreciate your professionalism and the time and the dedication that you have put on trying to keep Alexander County in great financial shape and making sure that things don't go south. And I personally appreciate that, and I've seen how hard you've worked over the years. And trust me, I've seen you for about 18 years, so I know how hard you've worked over the years. I know where we were, I know what you did, and how you kept things straight, and for that, I'll be thankful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are any questions from the board, or I will step aside for this public hearing.
I think we're good at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is a public hearing, so the hearing is open to the floor. If anyone would like to speak, you just have to raise your hand. We'll call upon you. You can come up to the podium, and when you come to the podium, just state your first and last name, and then you can begin to speak.
I can ask one question. Mind if I just ask one quick question?
Come to the podium.
Remember, this is not a question and answer.
Thank you so much. Just a quick comment. In the future, is it possible?
Last name.
Sorry, Don Taylor?
Thank you.
In the future, is it possible to get this in advance so we can look at it and maybe develop a question or two before listening to it this evening?
We're not voting on approving a budget today.
Right.
This is just another hearing.
Understood.
And...
But I think to answer your question, so you know, on April 21st, the proposed budget was presented to this board in public, and then pursuant to statute, it was also advertised, which the clerk took care of.
Okay.
And that budget, and it said it in the article in the public hearing notice, that the budget has been available in the clerk's office for a couple weeks since then.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was on the website.
For that purpose. No, just so you know, and the public knows in the future, that's how it works, and so you always have the ability, once that initial proposal is presented to this board, to go and do exactly what you just asked and read through it and figure out any questions that you do have before the public hearing tonight. But again, this is not a, they will not be voting on the budget.
Understood. I just, it would help to be able to generate questions.
That's the way it works.
Okay, so we have to go down to the clerk's office to go get it?
To look at it, yeah. You wouldn't, I mean, it certainly, if you wanted to pay for a copy, but you probably wouldn't want to do that, but you're welcome to sit there and look at it, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Anyone else from the floor? Come on up, Ashley.
Hey, my name's Ashley Starnes, and listening to the budget today, it sounds like a lot of places are going up and people's getting pay increases, things are costing more, things are being built up, but when you got to the fire departments, they really didn't get anything this year. I know there's infrastructure that needs to be built. I know there's things that need to be done. I know there were several fire departments came to the last meeting, including myself, that, you know, asked for a raise, and, you know, we didn't get anything. You know, one, I'd like to know, I guess, why, and I know you don't have to answer that now, but, you know, maybe if you could sit down with us and tell us y'all's concerns and what y'all see, but, you know, everybody's growing. Bethlehem's growing especially. I don't know about the other fire chiefs, but, I mean, I think we need money to build the infrastructure to get ready for all these houses and stuff. Last week, I was here with board approval, and my board backing me tonight. I'm kind of on my own, so just kind of speaking, but I just think, you know, I would wish y'all would reconsider, especially for Bethlehem, but not only for us, just all the other fire departments, reconsider their, you know, some of the ones that asked for money, maybe to give us a raise too and help us out a little bit, for we can build and we can get ready for this infrastructure and these houses and stuff y'all have coming.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else out on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment, and this is just a general comment.
You should close the public hearing.
And I pulled this information up on my phone.
Josh, I'm sorry to interrupt, but before you speak, the public hearing should probably be closed, and then you say what you'd like to say.
I'll say it in a minute. It's just a statement.
Come up, ma'am.
Assistant Mayor, state your name if you would.
Susan Fontaine, F-O-N-T-Y-N. I just had two quick questions as I was trying to follow. One was money for, was it eight more paramedics? Is that at a different station, or is that just to have a different team? Does that make sense?
Do you want me to answer that?
Sure, go ahead.
So, and again, this is a public hearing, but it's a simple question, so I don't mind.
Yeah, I hope so.
It is to expand and provide better coverage. The
For the existing stations.
Facility is expanding somewhat. That's already coming up out of the ground, and so this will be stationed in that expanded area to provide better service for the county.
Okay, and one other question. The $5 million that the deficit was reduced to, where is that money coming from to cover that?
Comes from a lot of different areas, and again, it's not finalized, but right now, a majority of it is from general fund.
Okay.
There is no tax increase proposed currently.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. First and second. All in favor, right hand. Motion carries. We are now, the public hearing is now being closed. Any discussion, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, like, make a comment. The Western Peamont Council Government, which is an organization that assists Alexander, Catawba, Caldwell, and Burke Counties, and the municipalities located in each of our four counties, together, we are considered the Hickory Metro. That's what, that's what state North Carolina sees us, you know, sees our area as, and kind of how we're identified. And, you know, inflation, we've all experienced it last several years, and basically, I just wanted to show, I just wanted to share some information that was put together by the Western Peamont Council Governments. This is absolutely public information. It's an Economic Indicators publication that they put out quarterly or four times a year. This is from the, this is from the winter last year, that, you know, the Economic Indicator Newsletter that's, like I say, put together by the Western Peamont Council Governments. I received it in an email, yeah, in an email in January from, from that organization. But just to give you, to kind of put things into perspective, people that know me, and I think people that know this board, know that we do not like to spend money. We do not like to waste money. But with inflation being what it has been, the information that I'm looking at, from 2019 to 2023, which we all know there's been significant inflation since 2023, there was also, you know, '24 and so on, but 2019 to 2023, US inflation rate was 19.1%. When you add, you know, the four years, it was 1%, 5.4, 8.5, and 3.2. Add those, it's 19.1. The Hickory MSA, which is our, which is the Hickory Metro Service Area, I think, or anyway, Hickory Metro, the same 2019 through 2023, we experienced inflation across the board. Some things didn't go up much, some things went up a lot, but across the board, 22.8%. So, basically, you know, when you look at that information, there's no way that Alexander County, or your household, or my household, or anybody, you know, anything else can operate on the same, with the same, same, you know, operate at the same level with the same, same money, or amount of money as that time. Another interesting fact, and I may ask one quick question. What percentage of our budget is employee cost?
I'm sorry, what percentage is?
What percentage of our budget is employee cost?
52.
52? Okay, so Alexander County, you know, budget, little over 50% is, you know, employee cost, being wages, benefits, paying into, you know, paying into state retirement plans and all those kind of things that we, you know, that Alexander County government is required to do, obviously because you have to pay, but, you know, some of it is by, you know, is required by state statute. That same period, north, wages in North Carolina, now remember, the Hickory area had 22.8%. Excuse me. Inflation rate. Why am I getting this mixed up? Anyway, wages went up 22.8%. I was looking at the wrong column. I didn't bring my reading glasses, and I apologize. Somehow, I forgot them in my truck. And, but anyway, you know, when you look at inflation of 20% and you look at increase in wages of almost 23%, that's may, that's big money. I mean, that's pretty obvious. On a $50 million budget, 20%, you know, doing some quick math, is $10 million. In Alexander County, one cent on, one cent of tax rate generates just over $400,000 of revenue for Alexander County to operate. And when I say Alexander County, I'm talking about emergency services, you know, everything from, you know, emergency services, DSS, you know... you know, you know, all of it, including what is funded to the school system at the local level. So, I want to say I'm very proud of what... I'm very proud of this board. And I'm very proud of how hard our finance department and all, you know, as well as our staff, being... Being other folks outside of the finance department. How well they do with what little we have. Because if you compare Alexander County's... You know, if you compare Alexander County's revenues to Caldwell, Catawba, Burke, Wilkes, Iredale, anybody. When you see those numbers, you realize just how tiny and just how rural we are. And so, I appreciate the hard work. Ms. Herman and staff, and Ms. Deborah, appreciate what you're doing, and Ms. Jamie. I'll say, maybe, maybe we're in a little better shape, you know, since we've got... We've got ladies leading us now. Because, at least, my wife thinks so. She's pretty smart, too. That's it.
Any other commissioner? I would like to say that the ones working on the budget, along with the Board of Commissioners, I feel like everyone's pretty conservative when it comes to numbers. We hear, of course, being a local elected official, you're out in the grocery stores, you're in Walmart, you're out at Courthouse Park, any other park. You're among your constituents. So you hear the daily wants, needs, feedback, where you've messed up, where you need to work in some area a little bit harder. To obtain everything that we need to obtain to please everybody, we would be in a pretty rough shape in trying to meet a budget. But as things roll through, this board has always listened to people later or whatnot, and I don't know if this budget will approve or not, but I think the June 8th...
Second.
Second will be the next time it'll be discussed. But you do have a collective group of conservative folks working on a budget. And then we do have several needs in this county that we have to find ways to fulfill those needs, and we will continue to look to do that, or, or I should say, I will continue to look to do that. And then we have, you know, the wants also, and quality of life, things of that nature. And then people say, you know, out there in the public, well, you know, $60 million budget, you ought to be able to do a lot of stuff. Well, there is a lot of stuff. I don't think people realize how much stuff is paid with $60 million, but it is quite a bit, and it does run an entire county. And then you have the things of capital needs. You always have buildings, roofs, heat pumps, all of that. You've got a fleet of vehicles. You've got maintenance on those vehicles. You've got the rising cost of law enforcement, EMS, or solid waste enterprise. Mr. Mitchell runs a very tight shift down there. I think the last increase on our convenience sites was 2010 or 11? I'll have to go back and look. It's been quite a while. And then our increase... We had an increase, I think, in the... On the tonnage just a few years ago. We're trying to get some of these areas to self float themselves in some fashion so that we stop taking money out of general fund to accommodate and make things flush. I think that is all I have. Any other commissioner have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, you know, all of us have been very conservative. And I know when I first came on the board, our fund balance really was, and I think Larry can attest to this, was almost single digits. We've worked to get that fund balance up, and I know all of us, I think personally, are still working to protect that fund balance. I'm thinking at one of our meetings, Ms. Herman said it was like 2018 since we took any money out of the fund balance. Last year, we actually put money into the fund balance. So, a lot of the things we're seeing here, and I appreciate this budget. I think we're, you know, real close. But, you know, there's still time for us to relook and look at things. I want us to be, you know, as close as we can get, but yet, just as Chairman Penile talked, you know, we have to fund things that are needed. And I know personally, I don't have to use it much, thankfully, but when you call 911, I like for somebody to answer the telephone, and I like for, you know, a truck to come out to the house if something's needed. You know, so those are things that, you know, we have to have to fund. And I guess we'll always be kind of behind the gun in Alexander County. The surrounding counties can afford to pay more money, do more things. But I really appreciate personally, myself, what we've been able to do over the past few years for the citizens of Alexander County, and still maintain a budget, you know, that's feasible. When these things go up, it affects each one of us, household, our budget. You know, we own property here. I have families that live here, and, you know, I like talking to my kids. If things really go up, it gets pretty difficult, you know, around the house. But that's things that we've got to look at, you know, make sure we're making wise decisions. And I appreciate the input from everybody tonight, and that's all I have in there. Thank you, Chairman.
I do want to reiterate one thing that Ms. Herman stated in her summary, was our general fund appropriation of 659,000. Our last installment will be this coming January on the Detention Center. So that's always a positive. That's worth a cent and a half of taxes. So anytime you pick up a half cent here and there, it really helps out a lot overall. If that's all, we will continue at this time with Ben Falkenberry, County Attorney, to bring us the Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 37.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm presenting tonight Budget Amendment Number 37, which will result in net increases of $54,432 in expenditures from the general fund in order to increase the Register of Deeds budget to cover estimated expenses for the remainder of this fiscal year for payments required by the state. It also increases the sheriff's budget for North Carolina Emergency Management Deployment Grant Funds, which were received to reimburse the county for Hurricane Helene response to other areas in western North Carolina, specifically to Rutherford and Yancey Counties. It also budgets for a... The state grant program for county veterans offices from the North Carolina Department of Military and Veterans Affairs. It finally increases the senior center budget for a reallocation of senior center operations grant funds from the Home and Community Care Block Grant. The 10% local match requirement is being met with expenses that are already included in the senior center budget.
Do we have a motion to approve the Amendment Number 37?
Make a motion to approve Amendment Number 37 as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
First and second. Is there any discussions or comments? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. And Ben Falkenberry will also give us some updates and announcements.
Just a few updates and announcements of things to look forward to, and then some recent awards that the county is involved with. That being the Completing Access to Broadband Program, which is a state program. I gave the board an update last meeting, two weeks ago, about over a $3 million award. There's an additional $320,000 that has been awarded to Bright Speed, which will address 125 eligible locations within the county, either unserved or underserved businesses or residences that this funding will help to bring high-speed internet to. Again, this award is directly from NCDIT to the contractor, no county match or procurement involved from the county. On June 21st, the 11th Annual Vertical Mile Challenge will be at Rocky Face Park. That consists of eight loops of the designated trails, which is approximately 16 miles. And there's also a half vertical mile option, which is four loops and eight miles. So we're inviting everyone that wants to torture themselves as much as possible to sign up for that race at rockifacepark.com. That race begins 8:00 a.m. at the Rocky Face Mountain Recreational Area. It's a beautiful park. I invite everybody to come out there and at least support the runners. Also, Monday, this coming Monday, May 26th, Wittenburg Access Swim Beach is reopening for the summer. It's open six days a week. It's closed on Wednesdays from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And this Monday, we'll have food trucks and a coffee truck for the grand reopening. So we're inviting everyone to that. I wanted to give everyone an update on the Bethlehem Water Tank Project. Installation of the water lines from the... Through the parking lot in front of the grocery store, Lowe's Grocery Store, beginning in July. So that project is progressing efficiently and moving forward. County offices will be closed Monday, May 26th, in observance of Memorial Day. And finally, the last update and announcement is our next commissioners' meeting will be held Monday, June 2nd, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Mr. Falkenberry, only one statement. I'll be glad to pay your entrance fee to the Vertical Mile. You just choose which one you want to run.
I'll be out there all day. Yeah, I might be able to get it done, but it might take me all weekend.
Well, you know, about... I mean, I was just picking with you, but I think it's, you know, if people will come out and see what goes on at the Vertical Mile, there are some people that run that thing unbelievable. And I'm like, really? I mean, they don't slow down. I mean, it's unbelievable to see the endurance and the strength of these runners. They're just unbelievable when they run that Vertical Mile.
It is, it is.
Come on out to Bethlehem. Come out to the park. Come out to the Alexander County Beach that is based in Bethlehem with the sand. Everybody needs to come out, check that out, because along with Duke Power, that came about to fruition. And we're glad to have that park over there and the beach area for our citizens to go over there and enjoy and swim.
Thanks, sir. At this time, we'll ask interim County Manager Deborah Becktell to lead us in the Consent Agenda.
So tonight on Consent Agenda, and really for the benefit of the public, we have a few matters from the Tax Administrator. There was some overassessment on a couple of items. That refund total request is $118.25. And then there is an additional amount of a refund due related to vehicles. There are 10 in total. Reasons include one vehicle was sold, another vehicle unfortunately was totaled, and there was an overassessment on two, and then six tags were surrendered. And that total amount of refund is $958.60. You have your minutes from the May 1st, 2025 special meeting, as well as the minutes from the May 5th, 2025 regular meeting. There is the lease for renewal of the Vashti Solid Waste Convenience Site. And the county attorney negotiated and finalized that lease. It... The time period of the lease is January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2026. The reason in the delay that it is just coming to you now, the property is held in a trust, and it is very challenging to get all the paperwork done when you're dealing with a trust. But that has happened, and the right entity has signed off on that. There is an increase of $500 a year for that location, and part of that motion would include you authorizing me to execute that lease on your behalf. There is a request to dispose of certain records. As you are aware, we have a Records Retention Act in North Carolina, and as local government entities, we are all required to follow that act as far as keeping records for certain periods of time before they can be disposed, particularly in the H.R. Department. There are applications for employment from January 2023 through... Sylvia? This says June 2025, which hasn't happened yet. So you're going to wait until after the end of the month, just to clarify. And at that moment in time, those records then can legally be destroyed. And then, of course, also for CDO licenses and safety-sensitive positions, we do do random drug tests for safety reasons, and those results from 2021 to 2023 are due to be destroyed. Again, pursuant to that Records Retention Act. And the final item relates to voting equipment. There are minimal upgrades that need to be done to all the existing voter equipment. And fortunately, Homeland Security Grants are in place to pay for those, so no tax dollars, no county funds of any kind. Be happy to try and answer if there are any additional questions, but those are the matters on Consent Agenda before you tonight.
Do we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda as read?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
First and second. Any questions, concerns? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand to approve. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
First and second. All in favor, right hand? Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks, for attending.